Okay, meeting is now called to order. First on the agenda, we'll have a public hearing. JMB Investment Company Special Use Permit Request. Lee County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on November 15th, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the General District Courtroom of Lee County Courthouse located in Johnville, Virginia to solicit input on special use permit request. JMB Investment Company has applied for a special use permit to allow retail store in the A-1 Agricultural District that property consists of approximately 1.45 plus or minus acre and is located just west of 11712 Wilderness Road on the south side of US Highway 58 and west side around 687 Public Level Road, approximately 1.63 miles west of Ewing. Do we have anybody here on that behalf?
My name is Tim Dunaway. I'm with JMB Investment Company. We're here to make this request and answer any questions that any public might have about it. For what's worth, I know this is probably the third one in recent time we've asked for in this area, but it's where our client wants us to go. We think it'll be a good little spot for convenience sake and all things a dollar generally usually is in a spot like that, so that's all I got. Do you have any questions? Do you think y'all are familiar with the site plan or at least seeing where it's at, generally speaking?
Is that down on our side? Mike's got y'all approved.
Just west of there, right in that bend where the Dr. Walters Road, wherever the name is, where he makes that bend.
Probably.
It's right there. Between that and that big old house to the west.
Yep.
The handout I gave you there right before the meeting had a plan on that showing the location.
Does that look commercial, though?
Sure, the map showed the zone, you know.
Get most of the 58 corridor of those merchants?
Yes, hold on just a second. We don't have that lit up on what they seem, but I was looking to see if it was on the application, but I don't.
I just heard that. Is that an overlay or something?
I think it should be, but I'm not certain on that. I think that that one is, but I'd have to go in the map and look.
So that's an overlay that's in addition to the A-1 zone and it's there?
Feels more like in addition to, but I'm not sure that it is.
No, it says it's in A-1. That is in A-1, yeah.
I think we're just outside, if there's a municipal limit to Ewing, I think we're just outside of that to the west, is what that's worth.
Any more questions? I make a motion to approve JMB Investment Company's special use permit.
Before you have a motion, you need to formally close the call or put a comment.
Anybody else on behalf? Okay, here none, we'll move on. Motion to approve JMB Investment Company's special use permit. Okay, you got a request? Got a second?
Second.
You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Mark.
Next, we got, excuse me, proposed amendment to fiscal year 2022/2023 budget. Lee County Board Supervisors will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 15th, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the General District Courtroom of Lee County Courthouse, Johnville, Virginia. The purpose of the public hearing is to solicit public council amendment to the fiscal year 2022/2023 budget. Lee County Board has the carryover funds from the prior fiscal year in the amount of, let's say, $1,054,612.35 and is requesting reappropriation of this amount to the current fiscal year budget. $1,054,612.35 is a combination of excess revenue and underspent expenditures. Anybody here on that behalf? Okay, here none, we'll move on.
Chairman, there is a resolution there if the board wants to approve the reappropriation.
Make a motion, we approve resolution 22-019.
Okay, got a motion, got a second?
Second.
Okay, have a second. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, before you move on, in the last paragraph of the letter from the school board, or next to the last paragraph, I guess you could say, they've also advised that they were funded above the required local effort and/or a portion, they were funded above that. So they are returning, or have returned, I guess you could say, after June 30th, a portion of that to the county. The total amount returned is $233,665 per the ongoing agreement between the board, the school board, and the board supervisors. They're requesting that $156,555 be transferred to the school board capital reserve fund and the remaining $77,109.45 would revert back to the county's coffers.
I'm not saying I'm opposed to an ongoing agreement, but how long is this agreement ongoing?
It's been in place for...
Five years, four years?
Five, probably five, six years.
Is there anything written or...
Yes, it was by resolution of the board to adopt it.
Okay. And what was the, do you know the increase in the local match over the last two years?
I don't have that with me now.
If I remember correctly, the one year was about $350,000?
Yeah, I was saying one year was close to half a million.
I was.
But I don't have the numbers from one year to the next, but...
I understand in principle why it was done, but with the local match going up, if I remember correctly, those two years combined got us up to about an extra $900,000 in what the local match is coming from the county and the school system. And with the $15 million, whatever it was they got in COVID money and us running a budget deficit, I'm kind of questioning whether we need to return all two thirds of that. Not saying I'm opposed to it, but it gives me a little heartburn. What are your other thoughts about it? It's normally not that much. And the reason we did that was so that they could do some work on their buildings and run.
It's normally about $6,000?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, some years it's been a hundred and some thousand, but it is a little higher. Now, I can tell you as of right now, of course, it's early in the year, we won't be definite on this until March. That's when the final numbers for the state are determined. But as of right now, they are running a higher student population as due membership than what they budgeted for. Now, if that continues to hold, I think right now it's about 25 students higher than budgeted. If that number holds, then our local, required local effort would increase at the end of the year above what we've got budgeted at this point in time. But again, that number, the actual amount is determined with the membership on March 31st.
Do we have to make a decision on that part of it tonight?
Uh, no, not necessarily.
Yeah, okay, further discussion on it?
Yeah, I make a motion, we'll table this next one.
Okay, got a motion to table, got a second? All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got departmental reports. Probably ways, how it works for them, we got any questions or concerns, they'll move. There's Treasures Report, anybody got any questions or concerns? Okay, Mr. Jones, your turn. Commissioner of the Refuge, Mr. Jones, tax relief for the elderly and disabled.
Good evening. I had submitted a document for your board packet, hope you've had time to look over that, but I've come to you tonight in an effort to seek assistance to help what I would consider probably our most vulnerable part of our population, that's our elderly and disabled. Over the last five years, our applicants and the monies that have been awarded for tax relief on the real estate program have failed from 710 applicants that were awarded relief in 2018 to 555 this past year. And the big reason that that has happened is because a lot of these seniors, they live on a fixed income and small incremental increases of social security have bumped some of them out of the qualifying threshold. So what I've come to ask tonight, and I've got a lot of different statistics, but I want to keep you all to mind, I would like to change the qualifying threshold. This hasn't been touched in 10 years. The last time that we made an amendment to it was in 2012. It was actually the first thing I ever came to the board for when I got elected. But at that point, we raised the qualifying threshold from 20,500 on the income limit to 25,000 and the asset threshold that doesn't include your house and up to an acre of land, any other monies, lands, anything like that, was increased from 75,000 to 85,000. If you are over those limits, then you didn't qualify for tax relief. I'm proposing that we increase the income limit from 25,000 to 35,000 and the asset limitation or threshold from 85,000 to 95,000. This would mirror what Scott County has recently done. They actually adopted that last year. We would still be less than what Wise County has. They have 42,000 as far as their income limit. But I have actually polled 17 different localities in southwest Virginia. And just to give you an idea, where at the average income threshold on those 17 counties was $34,268.59. So I'm requesting to go to 35,000. The average is $9,268.59, greater than where we're at. The average asset threshold is 100,000 and I'm requesting to go from 85,000 to 95,000, which would still be under the average. But to me, you know, it's important because as inflation keeps rising, the seniors are actually set to get about a 9% cost of living adjustment this coming year and that's going to bump even more people out of this program. And I just feel that we have a moral obligation to take care of the elderly in our community, to try to assist in any way we can. And I owe maybe to some people, $200 in relief doesn't mean a lot, but when you're on a fixed income, you have every dollar budgeted and all of a sudden you're bumped out because now you make $25,020 and you're bumped out of the program because you've done a little increase. That $200 really helps go a long way, especially every time you go to the grocery store or the gas pump, prices keep going up. I would like to ask for you to consider having a public hearing next month. It's my understanding, in order to change this, a public hearing would have to be held. The reason I would like to try to do this next month and I guess have a speedy resolution to this, if at all possible, to get it increased to my request, is because we typically mail those tax relief for the elderly and disabled forms out in January. If we could be done next month, we could amend our forms after the meeting and then still get them mailed out on time in January. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding the tax relief program. Like I said, I've got a lot of stats here and I don't want to bore you with all that information, but that's kind of a highlight of why I'm asking.
How old do you have to be to qualify?
65.
65. And the disability is based on what, what determination?
It's a social security disability. If your award is pending, we will accept documentation from, I think it's two doctor letters stating your status. I don't know if we ever had one applied based on that, but that's what's in the current code as it's written.
So just as the determination, what, so you might understand this right, that you can have a house, an acre of land, $95,000 and you can still qualify?
If you own your house and up to one acre, that's not considered in your assets.
Right.
You could have a million dollar house, but your other assets could be stocks, bonds, CDs, other real estate as an aggregate cannot exceed, currently it's 85,000 and I would like to propose an increase to 95,000.
So in my scenario, you're 65 years old, you've got $95,000 cash, you own your own home, it's paid for, you can qualify to get your taxes...
You're qualified to get, it also depends on your income. If you have all of those in your income...
And your income's 34,000.
In the proposal, you could qualify to get up to a $200 relief. You can see the bracket that's in the handout, they would actually qualify for 25% relief in that scenario that you're giving me. We have it tiered, so the greater your income, the less as a percentage your relief would be, but if your tax bill is $800, 25% would still be 200. It's capped at 200.
If you make less than that, but you're under 65 and you don't have as many assets, you don't qualify?
No, because you...
Net state income, right?
Correct, you wouldn't meet the, you wouldn't meet the age requirement. Now, if you're disabled, you could be under 65. You could qualify.
What's the net cost, I guess, too? How much revenue do we miss out on by going up to what you're proposing?
I have no idea because I don't know who all would qualify under the increase. I can tell you from 2018, the program cost $112,622 and that has decreased as the number of qualified applicants have decreased over the last five years. It's now $88,867.51. And like I said, the income threshold for the counties, I can give you at least the ranges in southwest Virginia, the lowest of the counties, the cities were a little different and I kind of extracted them. You had Norton was on the extreme bottom end, you had like Roanoke and Martinsville and some of them were on the extreme upper end, so I just took counties. But the qualifying threshold, the lowest of the counties was Patrick County, it's 24,000. So we're only 1,000 above that. And a lot of these counties that have the lower qualifying threshold, they all told me that they are looking at doing the same thing I'm coming to you tonight for. So a lot of that's going to be changing. The upper end was Roanoke County, of course, that's a little different handle, but they're $56,566, with most being between 30,000 and 40,000. Most counties, that's where they're at. The asset range is the lowest was 65,000, that's in Giles County. And again, the highest was in Roanoke County, that's 200,000, with most being 80,000 to 125,000. What I'm requesting is identical to Scott County. I feel like not only geographically, but their population, square miles, everything. We're more closer to line with Scott County than we even do Wise County, but a little different handle, their population's probably twice ours. So I try to look at that as probably be more of an accurate barometer of where we need to be to kind of keep up, I guess, so to speak. But, you know, I've got, as I said, a lot of different information. The average relief, most counties are $200 and that's where we're at. I didn't propose to increase that. The average across the board was $214.29. The lowest was in Buchanan County, they only award $125. However, they also have a $50 personal property relief for senior citizens. And Patrick County, Tazewell County, and Grayson County had the high end, they were all at $300, but the majority of people were 200. That seemed to be pretty, pretty much the majority.
Any more questions? Sounds good, everybody?
All right, and I guess if we can get that public hearing possibly scheduled, I can come back next month and speak again to you. All right, thank you all.
Thank you. I'm sorry to hear, public expression. Okay, hearing done, we'll move on to approval of amendment October 18th, 2022, record meeting.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Chair, got a motion to approve, got a second?
We have a discussion on that before we...
Yeah.
I believe that that employee lunch expense, I'm trying to go back and listen to the audio on it to make sure I'm right, if the audio wasn't there for the end of the meeting, I think Mr. Poe said maybe there was two segments of it and the other one hadn't been uploaded. But I think that the vote, as I understood it at least, was to have Mr. Poe talk to the county department heads about what they thought was appropriate and then make a decision, which was in part why I voted against it. But I just want to make it clear what the actual vote was.
I'm not sure if it had been there, I'd have to go back and listen to that. There was two or three segments on ours and I know it wasn't on our Harley's tape. But I'll go back and see, it may not have been there. I know I had a mental blank audition to that, but I can't remember if I did it or not.
Well, what do you remember about the motion?
I know that it was discussed, but by the time it got to motion, as far as that meeting, there was a lot discussed that night. I can't recall all of it. But I know that was a discussion and, but I can't remember exactly how the motion came out, where I didn't go back to mine, I was to see what I jotted down.
Yeah, I was kind of thinking that on the same line, that's what I thought.
But I can admit that.
Well, and if you look at the way the motion's written, I mean, it doesn't give any terms. I mean, can you get a $50 meal or how far do you get together? That was what we were discussing.
Right.
About what's called patients' work. So I don't know if you can go to Big Stone and get your meal paid for or not, from looking at it.
Well, it's out of town, this is the policy that was put into place. It's $15, that's GSA guy for lunch fee.
Who's GSA?
Uh...
Who's GSA?
Government Services Administration, that's federal, but the state has the same policy.
Well, I think we specified that it had to be, I know what you're alluding to, which was never mentioned about somebody going and getting parts in Big Stone or somewhere like that. That was never mentioned in conversation about getting paid somebody for that. We only mentioned, we only mentioned about training and going to meetings outside of your normal work location.
I think how I worded it was training or on county business.
It may not be the Big Stone, but I remember referencing some town close to this, or if you were here...
I think it was Big Stone.
You think it was?
I think that's what you said, but that was never mentioned about anybody driving, you know, because that's, that would kind of be, I mean, I don't know how you would determine that for in training or a meeting.
But yeah, it's like drug passports. I mean, they leave sometimes in Wise County, sometimes they're in Scott County.
The problem is that the way the minutes are written, I don't think that's what the motion was. And if this is the policy, then this motion is not this. So what's the policy? You know, what are the employees supposed to expect as far as going forward?
Well, we can readdress that, like I say, if you want, and you know, go back to the motion that Mr. Poe gets with all the county, all the department heads.
And that's what you remember?
Yeah, that's what I remember.
And come up with a solution on what they think is fair or whatever, not, you know...
Okay, so all department heads and constitutional officers, is that what we're talking about? That's why I wanted you to just sit at the mound that night and be done with it. That's what I requested.
Well, I don't know what they...
Because leading it up to the people who are asking for the refund to sit at the mound, it's a little bit odd when there's a standard already in place, a federal and state standard that's already existed, and that's what I defaulted to.
I'd like to find it myself.
Not to speak today in a horse, but what is the local area? Is that your county?
I'm assuming Lee County.
I guess the first question is, what do we do with the minutes? And then the second question is what to do with the policy? But as for the minutes, you know, I didn't both know on the minutes because it doesn't reflect what the motion was.
Well, again, I mean, the minutes can be correct.
That's some of those different departments, they may be already taking care of their, you know, some kind of way with their employees. I don't know how each department does it. It all comes through from us, doesn't it?
Each department comes from, comes from county.
My issue with it is if our Commonwealth attorney goes over to Gate City to cover a case there, they're outside of Lee County, I don't believe they should get $15 each lunch. It's no different than if any private citizen is working and they go outside their county for a few hours or whatever and they're back home and they get their meal covered. They pack lunch or pay for it yourself. I just don't think the taxpayers owe it to anybody to pay for the meal because they went to neighboring county. My wife goes, I'll wait and watch, and she packs lunch, never stops, eats anywhere. I mean, nobody owes you that, in my opinion.
Well, you got, just like we brought up in the last meeting, you know, that also that we have people that are going, so these meetings, they're going on their off days.
But your public...
So you expect them to go on their off day, but you don't expect to help them out, you know, at all, just expect them to just do it on their own?
They should get comp time. If they're on their off day, they should be getting comp time, they should be getting paid for the day, not, not lunch, they should get more than that.
I don't know how they worked, I don't know how the officers worked that duty, Dan, on the other off days as far as...
I don't deal with their day.
I don't either, I don't know that compensation for that.
They probably get comp day. If they're going on their off day, they're going to get embarrassed somewhere.
I don't have a problem, like I said, it's going, you know, getting with Dan and getting with the different people, so if the sheriff, Chris, you know, all the different people and decide what is... I don't have a problem, like I said, it's going, you know, getting with Dane and getting with the different people, so if the sheriff, Chris, you know, all the different people and, and decide what is fair, you know, to, to, to get, how they'll pay for it.
I don't have a problem with talking to them, but I have a problem with us granting somebody authority to make the decision. But I mean, if you, you know, if you make that motion inside, but that, that's not where I'm at with it, but.
Well, I don't think they did say it, I think Dane did. Did what? Make the decision on what, and what with the GSA is.
And I don't know that, I don't know that just talking with them makes a difference though, you know, but it might be best to have that, talk with them and discuss it with them, maybe some of them don't understand that.
I'm not opposed to talking to them. I, I'd like to hear back what they had to say and what they thought was appropriate before we make the decision. So I guess as to the minutes, uh, I guess technically there was motion on the floor. As to the minutes. Would you want to amend your motion, Mr. Mosley?
To what?
To that the motion was, the, the motion then, last meeting, was for Dane to talk to those people. I think we all agree that's what the motion was. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, I, I thought that fucking was.
Yeah, but that's not what the minutes say.
Oh, well, amend the minutes.
Yeah, that's. I'll say that goddamn.
Okay, was I supposed to set a rate at the meeting with them, or was I just supposed to meet with them?
Well, the motion is about the minutes. Then I guess we need to take the motion about what to do.
Well, no, no, it is about the minutes. My question is about the minutes. Do I leave, do you, would leave it in there? Or is it, the motion, I guess, is going to be, is it to approve payment of lunch bill expenses? Or to have county administrator meet with department heads and constitutional officers to get information on gathering a rate? Or were we supposed to set a rate?
I took it that you were supposed to say it, and that's why I voted against it.
Okay. I, I just wanted to make sure of what the motion is supposed to say, so that clears that up for me, so.
Second. All in favor, any opposed? Okay, next we got refund request.
Make a motion that we approach the refund request for Lance M. Ambergy and, uh, McLean Incorporated. I guess it's McLean or whatever.
Got a motion to bring both, both, uh, both. Got a second?
Sir.
All in favor, any opposed?
Same.
Okay, next we got the county administrator reports payroll warrants haven't been issued. Had approval of dispersed ones.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed?
Uh.
Okay, this next one's kind of, kind of odd when I've been looking at it here, and it says that, uh, Valid Health, that Stacy Healy is supposed to be here, but apparently it's not.
No, Stacy, no.
So, if you would.
Please, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm Michigan, I'm the administrator for local facility, we can't be, I still as well as long as I'm still up, and you all looked at, I mean, what got going on down at the hospital as well as some of the things that go on in Valid Health. So, uh, obviously we're trying to reimagine rural health care, it's kind of a whole reason for the merger between the two companies. As we look to become a national model for improving, uh, rural health, uh, we're trying to do high quality, low cost care and work through population health initiatives. A little bit about Valid Health as a whole is it's 21 hospitals, there's 13,000 team members. Uh, there's 90,000 annual inpatient discharges with 3 million outpatient visits and 336,000 ER visits with annual revenue of $2.2 billion and 750 employed providers. Nationwide, there have been 136 rural hospitals that have closed since 2010. It's a different story here, since the merger, all the, all the counties that have had hospitals, currently that have hospitals, we've actually opened a hospital here in Lee County Community Hospital. And we actually, back in July, celebrated our one year anniversary, and so we're really excited. Uh, actually, at that time, we were seeing about 38 ER patients a day, and as of the last six to eight weeks, we would see 60 ER patients a day. So continue to add providers and add services as it makes sense for Lee County Hospital. We're actually adding, uh, we were from one day of foster child services to two day of foster child services, and then we went from one day of mammography services to two days of mammography services. And we're actually brought on another, uh, nurse practitioner who worked in the ER during the busy times, and so we have actually two providers there. Uh, we currently still have open nursing positions, so we don't keep as many inpatients there as we would like to keep. We actually average about two inpatients a day, we have beds for 10. But because of the ER surge, we're really focusing all of our efforts to take care of emergency room and stabilizing, like I say, here. We've actually had, uh, since we've opened seven infants born there and, and it's an operating room, not a particular unit, it's very big, emergency room. So we're continuing to invest in our consolidations of services regionally, uh, moving from outpatient model, I think, uh, over the last several years, we've seen a lot of traditionally inpatient services shift to outpatient. Pote joints now are actually outpatient surgery now, which is a significant change. And then working on our system wide trauma network, and so the goal is that, uh, we have a call center that links up all of our trauma services from the EMS side, EMS side to Med Flight, as well as all of our emergency rooms. And then working closely with getting tele, uh, the telemedicine piece up and going and, and a little more robust than it is currently. We currently have the ability and capabilities to connect to tele-nice longer and do the nice longer visits for children, and so we're working on even greater, uh, tele network in the future. And then the newest thing we have just opened in Valid Health is a children's hospital, uh, that actually ER and Indian Path Hospital, and they've actually, it's been a great success for us. They're seeing about 30 to 40, uh, patients there per day. Workforce challenges, much like, uh, every other industry now, is labor shortages. Our R A vacancy rates are 60 to 70% in a lot of our departments. Uh, we continue to work closely with the local colleges, as well as the local high schools, and actually even grade schools with the C M H programs of both UVA wise, and then working with Mountain Empire to try to increase the amount of enrollment. I think COVID, uh, saw a lot of healthcare professionals leave the profession because it's not as glamorous and it's really hard work. And so we have a lot of people that retire early, couldn't do the work any longer, as well as working harder to take care of the community because they're sicker. Uh, physician shortages in the community is another obstacle to overcome. Our labor cost has continued to increase, uh, by 40% as average salary expense. And our contract labor cost, which is the traveling healthcare professionals that come into our area because we don't have enough healthcare professionals, has actually increased from 582,000 in 2019 to 5.5 million this year. And so that tells you how many, anyway, we're on a daily basis trying to, uh, actually recruit traveling nurses in here, so. Adjustments, uh, have created $120 million investments in wages for Valid. And increasing the nurse rates from $22 as a start rate to $27 an hour for a start rate, with the increasing pay at least 4% each year.
What is it, a R Ns or L P Ns at 22?
R Ns, R Ns. Actually, they just did a, a $5 increase per hour for, for, uh, L P Ns as well, just not at, at the start rate of 27. And that, that 22 just changed a couple of years ago, so in two years, we went from 22 to 27. And plus they have a lot of other benefits for them picking up extra shifts beyond what they're normally actually using. So if they work, you know, four shifts per week instead of three shifts per week, they actually have a, a significant benefit for that too. And it's still, it's still a, a better for us than bringing in a traveler because the, the opportunities of travelers is they're rarely invested in your policies and procedures. They really don't care about the quality of their community, like people who live here. Though what we got going on at Lee County Hospital is, out of the 50 team members we have, most all of them live here. And they care about the community and they care about walking into Walmart and seeing somebody they took care of. And so there's a passion and a culture here that we don't, that other places don't have, and we don't want necessarily to incriminate it with folks from outside the area.
This is, I just want to say, is the doctors traveling also, or do they rotate?
They, they rotate, so a lot of the ER doctors, we, we contract a group called S C B, they're a national company, who actually has a sole source agreement with all of Valid Health, so they provide the, uh, providers for all of Valid Health for the emergency room. And some of them for the inpatient care. And, uh, so they will, they will rotate them into us, but they have to have Regina credentially, and then they have to be credentialed at Lee County Hospital. And sometimes that's a little bit to overcome because when they're at Lee County, they have to not only take care of ER patients, but inpatients. And so they require some special set of privileges. Uh, lastly, uh, we had just started last week our, our construction project at Lonesome High Hospital, it was a $9 million investment. We've been waiting actually on materials to get the construction started. We waited 22 weeks on door frames, so it just tells you a little bit about construction costs. And we did, back in December 2021, purchased the Dixon Armory, and the, the goal was there to, to build a complex for, uh, primary care physicians, as well as bringing over physical therapy and some other things onto the campus. With the construction costs and finding labor the way, the way it is, we might have to, uh, reimagine what the campus is going to look like at, at Lonesome High Hospital. We're excited to get the ER project started now, we actually started that last week. And so that's going to be about a six month project, and the goal is to, kind of like your house, start an open floor plan, where you have, you know, kitchen and the, and the living room all in. Is to, uh, right now, there's two broken up sections of the emergency room where you can't really have line of sight on patients, and that's not a little safer for patients when they come in, you can't see them from the, uh, from the provider space. So we really want to fix that, make it better for flow, get people in and out of ER more quickly and safely. So that, that'll be in two phases, first phase will take about 10 weeks, and then the, the second phase will actually, uh, change where the, I mean, ambulance bay goes and bring them inside door while we actually redo the current, uh, ER. And that's all I have, unless you have questions. Our goal is to come back and recreate updates for Valid.
Are you presenting in front of like the VOTED kids that are studying nursing, or are you able to get in there at our school in Lee County?
We are, and it, it's been, we, we actually started more in Wise County, I was the operator director for a few years before I went into administration. And actually I found that I wanted to get more seniors excited about going into healthcare jobs. And when I went to seniors, they said, if you don't start in eighth grade, you're really behind the eight ball because they have to create a career plan in eighth grade. And, and so they then start getting out of health sciences and maths and all those things, they need to be successful. And actually, but doing banana plasters, we're operating on bananas with third graders at science fairs as a student, as a chief nursing officer, to try to get folks going home and talking about healthcare careers. But our goal is, we actually started a new Claude, Claude War, a foundation work closely with us to get a CNA program started, because the goal is if we can get them in as CNAs, we can grow L P Ns, grow R Ns, we can help them along the way, give them dollars for that, and so we've actually got a lot of folks that are, that are under, uh, valid funds to help their, finish their schooling too. VOTED's a big, well, you actually got a good VOTED program at Dixon County to work, work close to it too. They start the CNAs in high school, and then, you know, just like Lee County with the L P N part, it, it works well if you get them in early, invest in them, and then they want to stay. Agreed, thank you.
Anybody got any questions? I've got a comment, glad to have you.
Well, thank you. Thanks for having me here, we're excited. I think, uh, it's been a real challenge, I think everybody thought that the volume at Lee County would be similar to what Dickinson volume is in the ER, and they see roughly 16 to 18 patients per day, and, and we're seeing 60. So it just, I mean, we're, we're really proud of the support that the local, uh, community has with the hospital, and we really want to embrace that.
Well, when, when I had that, they kind of fixed the numbers to make it look bad.
Yeah.
And it wasn't as bad as.
No, we actually, we actually plan on actually, uh, having a possible budget. So we're, most critical access hospitals do not, they, they are a subsidy for the, for Valid Health, and you see it as, the reason is because, you know, we get referrals from those ERs, and so you get all the services attached to them. That's not the case at Lee County, because of the volume that we have, and we expect it to increase still, yes, is, uh, we will actually be profitable.
That's great. You know, one of the things that too, and I've talked to, you know, several rescue personnel, and, and they were just, uh, really pleased, uh, not the first negative game from Lee Hospital, so, you know, I think that's very good.
And what we want is to do a little better on proof at times. It takes a while because lots of times we're waiting on beds in other, other hospitals for people who need other services. And so we can't cycle people through as quickly as we want to, because the two things that are really important to every patient is how quickly can I see a doctor, and that will be like at home. And so those are the two things we really want to improve on, and so we're focused on that, but my team is, is super excited to be working close to home.
Most of what I see on Facebook is compliments about the hospital, I've rarely seen anything, anything negative about it.
No, we, uh, we actually get a lot, we set up press any surveys, which looks at testing patient satisfaction, and we're one of the highest in Valid in our community, so we're pretty proud of that. Our team will do a good job. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we got finance supplemental appropriations. I made a motion to approve the supplemental appropriations, this amount of $18,750. You got a motion, got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Okay, let's go to old business. Got first, we got St. Charles Rescue Squad.
We have a correct lease, county attorney, attorney, that.
Can we take this to close session?
Any motion to?
So.
Can you get a second? I'll say, all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Okay, we got, uh, D S S, please, tell you one.
Uh, I have reviewed that and, uh, it is under the amount right now. I will be in contact with him in the next couple of days to advise the discrepancy and request that be amended for this year.
How much was it? It wasn't $200?
Yeah, it's about, it's about $350, they're still paying at the same rate from two year ago, so they missed a year. So I want to show them the, the difference from last year and.
You want to make a back-up plea?
Well, that's what my request is going to be.
Good. I thought it was worth the asking, right?
Yeah.
Okay, next we got tree at D S S parking lot.
That tree was removed on November the 8th, since there was no vehicles parked there that day, so it's been taken down.
Okay, next we've got Starlink broadband access.
Uh, currently, the Virginia Coquill Economic Development Authority is administering a $500,000 allocation from the General Assembly to assist with broadband funding for students either not served or underserved in the region. There are approximately 54 accounts still available, this was as last, as of last week. Uh, previously, Starlink accounts had to all be in a central area, which you basically had to have a pop, but that is not the case. Uh, with this funding cycle, accounts can be anywhere in the county, all they need is a, is a current 911 address to be able to address that. The current cost for a Starlink account and a two-year service subscription is how these are packaged, is $4,000. Uh, the scenario that was proposed by Appalachian Broadband Innovators is for the seat of funding to cover 60% of that cost, or $2,400, with counties to provide a 40% match, or 16%. with counties to provide a forty percent match, or sixteen hundred dollars per account. Uh, the applications have to go to the CETA. Uh, they must be submitted by the Economic Development Authority, and they would be due in mid-January in order to be considered for their February meeting day.
Is there a minimum on how many we have to do? We can do anything up to fifty-four?
There was no, no minimum stated. Fifty-four is the total available left.
Right.
At that point in time. I don't know who else will apply or if anyone else will apply in the, in the, in the next funding cycle.
They would.
How much did the, how many accounts did they start out with?
Uh, they had five hundred thousand dollars. I'd have to do the math on it to see what that comes out to, but.
The, the last time someone mentioned to me that was sixty, because I remember we said there were five districts. You could have twelve inch district if we divided them up evenly. But I don't remember what the starting number was when they first started.
I don't, I don't know.
I'm making a motion to table that one.
Let's see, the math works out to two hundred and eight.
I don't make a. Sixty-seven dollars a month of, of county money.
Well, I'm assuming this has to be paid up on the upfront.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Will you table it till twelve and eleven or what?
Well, I don't know. I don't think so. We need to vote on it. I mean, the district has applied for it.
Well, do we want to tell them to apply for it?
Yeah. I mean, I don't think, if we do that, we don't have to vote on it.
Well, there has to be, the county, there probably needs to be a motion to show that you're willing to put that below the max.
I make it, I said, I think we ought to talk about, I, I have a reason for it though, okay, you know? Because there's some people that's already paying for it.
I just found out very recently. I thought that the county had to participate. But the county doesn't have to participate unless you want to get that money. But I don't think the individual, individual people can get the CETA money.
No.
No, the, the applications to the CETA have to be through the EDA.
Those people are already getting, if they, if they want to subscribe to it, they can. I, I wasn't aware of that either until recently.
Yeah, that's kind of recent.
I was going to tell you, yeah.
But they've got to pay the hundred percent.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm okay with table. Then we can talk later later. If, the people in Lee County that have it now are paying a hundred percent because they're not getting the sixty percent from the CETA.
Some of them might not be able to.
Might not. Might not. So, I second your motion to table it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, county code, free application.
The, I have been through that. The county attorney is reviewing as well. Just, uh, regarding the draft, the original draft received from the vendor and their notes and suggestions. But I'm also working to compile all the amended and newly adopted ordinances that have been approved since we began this project. Those will have to be sent to them for inclusion in this as well.
Okay, county building maintenance check.
I'm trying to compile a list of county owned structures. I want a little bit of guidance on that. I would assume that we're not talking about every county building, just those that are not occupied on a daily basis, or what are we talking about? I mean.
What, what other county buildings are it's not occupied? I mean, you got the elect, the electoral board, the courthouse. Well, I guess you got a lot when you ever think about it.
Yeah.
Garage.
Most of them are occupied. Now, as far as, uh, structures that are not occupied, let me see.
That's kind of what I have in mind.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to, just to confirm, that we're just talking about those that someone isn't there today that sees maintenance that's needed. Uh, basically, uh, we've got, uh, the Jonesville Institute building. You've got, uh, the, uh.
Head start.
Head, head start house. You've got the old, uh, fire hall at Saint Charles. Uh, we, we got that building. That's what our MBO, that area is housed in. For what purpose it serves. And there will, I'm not sure how many buildings, other than the, the old town hall, that's the subject of, uh, the lease agreement with the Rescue Squad. But I'm not sure if there's any other buildings that the town owned that would be, that became the property of the county due to the dissolution of the town charter or not. I've got to check that out. If they are, I'll add those to the list.
Now, what about the building place like, like up at Rob?
Well, that's the, the Rob's Chapel, uh, building, which, uh, basically, the registrar's office keeps us in, in the electoral board keeps us updated if there's any issues on that. We recently had put roof, had put a metal roof on it because we kept, kept putting paint sealant on, on the roof. But it kept leaking. Water kept getting in. So, he just put a new roof on it, metal. And, uh, which it was metal to start with, but he, he covered that. So, that was done before election day. But that's, you know, there's no powder that stays on there, uh, anything like that. And it's, it's a pre-built utility building, basically. And the cemetery is public house. That's the only other one we have that's county owned. And I've got them on the list.
But I, I know they go up there and mow and stuff like that, but it doesn't hurt to, to go in and do a spot check inside occasionally in case somebody breaks in and just destroys the inside of or something like that. I wouldn't think it would be caught off guard last minute. And they may do that. I don't know.
Well, I mean, when they're there mowing, the door's been tampered, the window's been broken out. I think they would note that, but, um, we'll, we'll put it on the list anyway.
Speaking of head start building, somebody reached out to me recently. He's got a daycare service that was interested in doing something with that building. What's, what's the plan for these buildings such as that? That, there's nothing in there now except the junk. It's a decent structure. We own it. What are your thoughts about renting it out to someone for some kind of business? Or sell them just that house or something?
I prefer not to sell, but I don't have a problem with leasing.
What about the lot beside it? The big open lot that goes down to the next driveway?
Well.
Probably what a half acre long. We don't own that one.
I don't think we do.
Who do you think?
All they did to us was the house.
And they went, they put their pens around the fence. The chain link fence that runs out through there behind that lawn?
You talking about going west?
Going west. There's a big lot down through there. Probably put two houses on it.
That's not been deeded yet. That and the double wide. None of that's been deeded to the county yet. That's still school property. Because they're still doing the mowing.
You may be right, but I don't, I thought I saw that survey, and I'm pretty sure those pens run right along with that chain link fence.
They, they may have surveyed, but they did not deed that. They only deeded the house. That's mine. I'm pretty sure. I can double check that. But I think that's all they deeded to the county was just the house lot.
Maybe we can talk about renting that under expected business.
Next is PSA request for ARCA funding.
That was on the agenda last month. No action was taken.
All right.
The request there is to provide nine hundred thirty-six thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars in funding from ARCA funds for the Blackwater Community Water Project Phase Two.
When I was campaigning, there was two things they asked for in Blackwater. One was water, the other was a Dollar General store. They desperately needed water up there for a long time. I think we should prove this.
Is that a motion?
Sure.
I'll second that. Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we move into new business, uh, board appointments. First, airport authority.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I appoint Scott Taylor to that position. Second.
Who'd you say?
Scott Taylor.
Scott Taylor.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion? Got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got, uh, gets two positions for the planning commission.
I got, yeah, that's, uh, on that planning commission, I appoint Rick Ellis to that position. Second.
Who's the other opponent?
District four.
Did you say Rick Ellis? Who's on there now?
It was, uh, Greg Ressi.
He didn't want me to.
He was acting.
Motion to table that. Okay, finish this other motion first.
Okay.
Got a motion and a second on Rick Ellis. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now, Larry's got a motion to table the second one. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got, uh, police vehicles.
Do you want me to go over what's in the memo, or has it been already read it, or?
I'm ready.
Pricing on all of these is through the Virginia Sheriff's Association. Cut off date on anything under state contract is already passed. No, no guaranteed delivery time. Got rough estimates on, on the Dodge Charger for second quarter of twenty twenty-three, which would be somewhere between April and June of next year. Same thing on the, on the Dodge Durango and on the Fords. They have no delivery date estimate. But they require a purchase order to determine even if the units can be assigned to us.
What are you leaving Ford?
Fords typically what we had in the rotation.
Well, we're, we missed out on Ford this, but we're going to be missing out on Ford, aren't we? We're going to fall behind because.
We're going to be close to, you know, what delivery date actually turns out to be. I mean, we're going to be close to the end of, and we've actually been close to the end of the year the last couple of times we bought. It's just keep pushing further and further out. And in this case, basically, they're, they're just about jumping a model here on us.
Who, who's the second bid from?
Uh, these are, these are the, uh, selected vendors from the Sheriff's Association. We got no bids. These are just, these are the negotiating rates under the Virginia. The Virginia Sheriff's Association broke away from this state contract, State's common with Virginia. They had their contracts, but the Sheriff's Association started going out for vendors of their own, uh, outside of state contract to see what they could do. So, all of these are working, you work directly with the dealer on these. The fees are, were approved by Virginia Sheriff's Association and qualify the same as the state contract.
The Durango though, was that from Magic City?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the Charger and the Durango were both from Magic City.
Well, on the Durango, is it pre-wired?
Uh, there was nothing stating that it would not have the pre-wire for the grill lamp, sour, and the speaker.
Well, I think, you know, how much that would cost? I don't know what aftermarket price is.
Uh, not sure. It's not a tremendous cost, but the cost of lighting stuff has gone up considerably in the last few years anyway. On, on, not everything.
Well, we already have the Ford utilities. That's what we have now.
Yes. We, we have Dodge Chargers and we have the Ford SUVs. We do not have any Durangos. And of course, we still have some Chevrolet's in the fleet. And I think maybe you still have a few older Ford sedans. And just sort of, if, if you introduce a Durango, that's provided, that's another model that we have to carry. Or, or not a lot of parts, but maintenance parts and things for it.
I'd stay away from the Durangos.
I almost feel like you about to save money by paying the extra for what we already have to keep from kind of what both you two were talking about, is trying to stock parts for another type of vehicle. Because that, it's, it's going to cost, you know, the more vehicles you have, the more the cost is.
I agree with that, but you, you got nine thousand dollars left on the purchase price. I, I would split it between the Chargers and the Ford. I call it the next four words, basically what it is.
I almost feel like that. My personal opinion would be to go with the, with the Fords if we can get them.
And you got a purchase order for the Fords to determine if units can be assigned to us. If they can't, then we're just buying another one. Or two.
What would you do?
I'd just go with the Chargers. They're all wheel drive.
I'd like to get some Chargers, but I know they also need SUVs too to go some places, but I don't think they need all SUVs. What's all this stuff cost for this Charger here? Has it got nothing on it? What are the thirty-five hundred dollars?
Well, the skid plates, I mean, if they, if the dealer can't provide them, you can't get them for that model. So, that's just, and of all vehicles that need it, Charger does because they ride low to the ground.
You've got to have skid plate, and then you sense that we need some truck.
You typically don't always see those on, on passenger vehicles, on sedans. Uh, you used to, could get them on police vehicles, but they're, they're just saying they, they don't have them available. The, the pre-wire is not a, it's probably less than a thousand dollars cost, uh, to have to go aftermarket. But I mean, we'll just have the lighting vendor do that. And it's that, do that wiring itself.
That's fair. Yeah, it also says due to supply and demand, uh, issues. Well, if you get those, you can't get that stuff.
But now, does the Ford come with everything?
The, I, I mean, the lighting vendors, I think, will probably do the work. I, I don't know what their supply issues are. I can't say.
Does the Ford come with everything?
Uh, yes, it comes with, with what we expect.
How long would it take to get a, it's been a long time since I've dealt with purchase orders, but how long does it take to, to, to send in a purchase order like that and find out if you're.
If you approve them, the purchase orders will be sent in probably before nine o'clock tomorrow morning. He said it would, should just be a matter of a few days to determine if they can get them assigned to us.
Well, you got to remember about those skids plates and all that kind of stuff. Some of these vehicles don't be school resource officers, things that they're not. With their TM deal, for example, he's running Jonesville Thomas Walker. That's what he does most of the time. You know, so.
Eventually, they'll be in those, usually the new vehicles go on the road.
Assuming like you need for everything, you know, they may have to jump in one go. If you don't have this, I mean, this Ford's got everything on it. I see the difference in the price, but maybe if this year don't have anything on it.
Now, probably, if, if we're on the subject, that's probably, we need to try to jump on that first, so as we jump into budget, try to start, try to get.
Well, one of us will say. Well, one of us will say next year, if, if this continues, uh, I would suggest that you consider pre-ordering next year. As you begin budget, just determine what you're gonna, what you're gonna order and go ahead and put in an order for it.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at.
Knowing that it won't be delivered until sometime in the new year.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at.
For any of these gonna be going to the investigators? Seems like they're all probably got old vehicles and stuff.
Those are not police vehicles.
I know that, but-
No, but then, if it's done as it has been in all prior years, the new vehicles go on the road, they go to road officers. And the higher mileage road officer vehicles come off and go to other positions. They, they typically put the newest vehicles in the road officer's hands.
Well, we're probably just talking at the max of about, uh, twenty thousand dollar total cost anyway. That isn't all right.
Just twenty?
Well, I mean-
Twenty here, relieve another twenty-five thousand dollars of taxes here.
Well, what I'm basing the twenty on is it could cost you more than that if you, you know, if you take a chance on something, there could be a, a higher cost.
So you're opposed to buying any Chargers?
I, I, well, I don't, I don't see the need in it. I mean, that, that roughly every department, you know, across the country is going SUV. They're doing away with the car they're carrying. And in a, in a rural area like we live, especially, you know, in the towns, cars are great, that's where they need to be.
See, that's what the options are about.
Where you travel so many different places. Every road you travel on ain't paid.
That's what they're talking about, the option, that said the Chargers is just too low to the ground, you know, the ground.
They go to a lot of other places.
Yeah. Good car, goes faster than anybody.
That'd be my suggestion to go through. If we can get them. If we can't, we have to have a backup plan. That would be a motion I would make to, uh, to see if we can get those.
I'm just sitting here thinking about what the discussion's gonna be like in a few years when you determine whether by gas or electric.
It won't. Hey, right now, no more electric hookups than they are in this county, if it's a pretty easy choice. I don't know about any.
We just have to put a charging station down there in our new parking lot.
Yeah, well, that's right.
Or, or take it over to-
Or use the schools, they're gonna get, uh, some new buses, so we can use their charge locations, I guess.
Yeah, solid about the bus. I said it took three air from the charger.
You want to, but imply a backup plan on that motion they do if we can't get the-
Yeah, I think, uh, it's, I think have a big good idea. I mean, we're gonna be behind if we don't. If that, we're gonna have to jump on about eight in the budget cycle, new budget cycle.
Well, my recommendation would be that if you can't get the Ford, you get the Charger.
Can't get them by whim?
Huh?
Can't get them by whim?
Well, I mean, it says here.
If you can't get them assigned to you.
But is there, is there even a date when they do?
They don't have a delivery estimate date.
That's what I'm saying.
Because I don't think they can get that from Ford right now.
If you can't get it assigned and you can't get it by such and such date. That's something.
But by the same token, on the Dodges, that is a rough estimate on delivery.
Right.
Well, I'll look more.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think we could come back, we could come back next month and, and do that, I guess. I mean, like I said, it'd just be a month.
In the meantime, we would see how much the skid plates cost.
Well, if, if you're gonna wait, I, I can't issue a purchase order for something to even see if they can provide. If we issue a purchase order and they assign them to us, they're ours. I can't go back and say, okay, we're not really, we wasn't serious about that purchase order, we was wanting to see if we could get-
Well, that's the intent. We won't say if we, if we can't get them, then we gotta go to a backup plan. But until we put in a purchase order, how are we gonna know if we get them?
Okay, but I thought you were saying just postpone it till next month to make a decision, period.
No, we need to go ahead and get some if we can get it. If they tell you we can't get them, then then we have to go to another plan, some sort of.
Get them by whim, second quarter, twenty-three?
Well, I don't know what their date will be.
I don't know if they'll give us a date. What he said was they would, if we gave them a purchase order, he could run it through the system and see that they could assign the vehicles to us, or how many they could assign to us.
If you don't get a date, you'll be already where last year was on. Then can you withdraw your purchase order? Or can you think-
I wouldn't recommend it because we don't know what we're gonna end up with when we go to the others.
Can you say in your purchase order that this is continued on delivery by such and such?
I, again, I don't think they'll give you a delivery date. No, no different than the Dodgers. There's no solid delivery date there, not even a good estimate. And the estimates we've had for the last two or three years have been useless. Because it's a very turbulent market in, in vehicles. It has been. The, the supply issues are killing all of them. Uh, a lot of people, I do know, a lot of, of departments had orders for 2022 Fords. And they, Ford just canceled those, told them they would provide 2023s, but they're providing them at 2023 prices.
Could you handle the three interceptors on one Charger?
Some of y'all, I mean, whatever y'all vote for, I would recommend Ford.
I'd rather have two too, but was seeing if you'd compromise on that.
What you think, Robert?
About Ford?
I mean, what you think?
I don't really have a preference. It just depends on the, the availability and the delivery date. I don't wanna keep postponing it. Or you just push it back, you know, what they say here, mid-second quarter could go mid-third quarter.
And it could be the same on these Fords, that might be what they said. He has no preference, so I would say Ford. And the cost, like you say, the cost time you have to put all that stuff on is not gonna be much.
You gotta remember there's a difference in running SUV up down the road and the tire for an SUV and, and maintain the car. It's not just one time thing.
There is, I believe.
I think there, I've never had a Charger, but I would suspect there is.
I'd almost bet it's front wheel drive.
I do.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and, and, uh, put in a purchase order for Ford, uh, the Ford utility, yeah, sector.
Say.
Okay, got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to put a contingency in there in case you can't get these?
Yeah, we can, or, or, I mean, we ain't gonna know, but well, I guess we can, we can do that.
I'd say you can't get the Ford, you get, get the Chargers, get check, get them checked by the skid plates before.
I, well, I'm just assuming skid plates aren't even available on that vehicle.
Yeah.
I think if they were, the dealer would've been able to provide them. And what they're saying, they had got a supply chain issue on is the pre-wire.
You do Ford Chargers if you can't get the interceptors or? Can't get them by whim, or you just wouldn't put a date on the interceptors?
Well, they give you a mid-second quarter rough estimate, that's all they give you. We don't know about the interceptors. Till we, they send them in.
And again, I don't think they can give you a delivery date. If it's, they'll, those vehicles will be assigned to you, they're gonna hold it for. But I don't think that-
Would they give you any kind of indication?
Well, they have, they have it at this point. I don't know if, I mean, we can check with them and see, but I don't, I just don't know.
I can make my way up. Good. That's, make that part of the motion then. Got a second?
Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So that's to go ahead and provide a POs for four of the Fords. If they cannot assign a vehicle to us, then we go ahead and move to Ford Chargers. If they can assign the vehicles to us, even though they don't give a delivery date, we still lock in on the Fords, correct?
Yeah, I'm sure it's gonna be around the same time. I guess you can ask them about that if, if you don't-
We'll, we'll ask them.
Okay, next is library insurance.
The, uh, Los Alamos Regional Library System recently notified us that they've been carrying insurance on both the two buildings that they occupy in and contents, the one in Pennington and the one in Rose Hill, for several years. Uh, they've been advised by their carrier that they may not be able to collect on the loss of the building if it were destroyed, since they're not owned by them, they're owned by the county. Uh, counties carry the insurance on both building contents on the issue for well over twenty-five years, for the ones ever aware that the library system was carrying coverage. Uh, there are two options, uh, that we're looking at, uh, considering this matter at this point. The, uh, county could provide a letter to the regional library system advising that the county requires them to carry coverage on the building as part of their responsibility of operating the library in county, in county on biz, buildings. Uh, this would save county's supreme costs each year, but any proceeds from the loss would go to the regional library and not to the county. Uh, or the county and the library could split these costs. Uh, county could carry coverage on the buildings, since we own the buildings, and the library could carry coverage on the contents. To me, that seemed like an equitable, uh, split on it. We would need to increase our coverage, which building construction costs have been going up for like two or three years crazy anyway. The insurance company usually has an independent appraiser come out and look these, at, at selected structures every few years. Uh, that hasn't been done since COVID and since, uh, construction costs have spiked. And you can see there's considerable difference in, in the coverage we're carrying and, uh, what the regional library is carrying at this point. So we would have to come up with a, a higher number. Of course, we're locked in on our, our coverage this year. If we wanted to increase it, I think we could contact them about that. I'm not, there would probably be a small, uh, increase in premium. I wouldn't think it'd be a lot, especially if we canceled contents coverage.
Now, you know, my question is, is the same insurance company, or we pay the same insurance?
No, no, I don't know who they have their coverage for.
So how kind of alder would've ever discovered that?
Uh, our alder don't look for, does somebody else carry insurance on your buildings? They don't have access to-
Well, if that's an expenditure.
But not for us. It's our building. It's our property. We have a right to insure. Uh, you know, the regional library system, no one knew they were carrying coverage on the structures. I'm assuming this is something that's going on in the other counties as well.
I do option number one.
Yeah, okay, that.
Well, we both don't need to be carrying coverage on it, that's for sure. But, you know, I prefer that we had the insurance on the building. And they can do it on contents.
If the library carried that coverage, then they get, if something happened, they'd be, well, they got the money.
If we required, then if there's, if there's a loss of the building, they, they would receive proceeds, not them.
And option number two, they wouldn't?
Correct. They, they would receive, uh-
The contents.
Contents, the county would get for the building.
I could, I could just take Mary. Uh, then I got you, I got you. Yeah, I, I believe you.
I'll make a motion, we approve option number two.
Okay, got a motion and a second to approve option number two. Got a motion to accept option number two.
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got the grant right contract.
The current contract agreement expires at the end of November. Current contract's at a cost of a thousand fifty dollars per month. And it's generally a twelve-month period of attack.
I'll make a motion and we approve the contract, same as last year, same rate.
Okay, got a motion, got a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, next we got the appointment of building code official.
Uh, I meant to discuss this with you last month, and I probably don't figure that out. Of course, the, uh, Mr. Bush retired effective November first, so that position is currently vacant. Uh, Mr. Carter holds the title of field inspector. He has successfully completed two of the three required tests for the code official certifications. Uh, he would have, if he's appointed, he would have one year for the day of appointment to complete that third test and certify. I don't know if the board wants to discuss this in closed session before you act on it or not.
We don't have to advertise that duty.
No.
I'd say take it closed session. Second, got, got a motion and a second, take it closed session, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, got, adjutant department transportation resolution on bridge abandonment?
This is on the two bridges that I talked to you about last month, and I requested a, a resolution requesting that any savings from abandoning these structures from the maintenance system be used in hard servicing the remainder of Route seventy-six, these path road, and those gravel roads in Rose Hill on New York Avenue.
Make a motion, we approve resolution twenty-two dash zero two zero.
Got a motion, got a second, got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got the moral obligation resolution for St. Troll's Waterline replacement project bond insurance.
Uh, that should be the bottom issue, I'm sorry. You, the, uh, public service authorities proposing to issue a water and sewer revenue bond in the amount of three hundred eighty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars to Virginia Resources Authority to partially finance the St. Troll's Waterline replacement project. Uh, as a formality, the RA requires a resolution authorizing the execution of a support agreement uh, provided for the county's moral obligation to appropriate funding to the PSA for debt service of the bond in the event that they do not have sufficient revenue to do so. Uh, this is typical request on project financing, of project financing, financing agencies on water and sewer projects. Uh, you do have a resolution attached along with a copy of the-
You do have a resolution attached along with a copy of the support agreement and the financing agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 22 dash zero two one.
Second.
Got second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got reports and recommendations from county attorney. Okay. Reports and recommendations from the county administrator.
Have brought a copy of the proposed contract for fuel tank installation at the airport. You may want to discuss that in closed session. Had we made a discovery last week, the camera and the recorder at the Thomas Walker Pool have been stolen. Someone broke in, set the facility closed. Not sure how many cameras were in that system, and I forgot to run me a new copy of the email. I believe what Mr. Collinsworth sent me was probably, maybe up to eight cameras because now we're talking about having the baseball court down on the far end, and we'd like to be able to cover that with a camera as well. They typically have parking lot covered with cameras and pool area, just the area in general, but also to include that. And I have suggested rather than having it stored just solely on a DVR that rewrites after a certain period of time. You still have to purge if we did this, but I suggested that we buy a system that would upload to cloud, that we could retain it for a longer period of time. And then also, even if the DVR is stolen, as it was in this case, we would have access to the recording to see who it was that took it before it was gone. But I wanted to talk to you about that before we invested in it. I don't have a cost on it at this point, but the cloud storage would probably be of either, probably a monthly fee, and we could have it set up that we could purge it, only retain data for, say, a 90-day period and then have it purged out, something to that nature.
So you store it where now?
Well, it would record it on the DVR, but had it go to cloud storage so that we got access to it even if the DVR gets stolen.
So if.
In this case, the DVR was in a lock box, but they cut the lock off.
You've already got internet there?
We don't have internet, but service access, that's something we would have to add.
We should have. We get it from school?
Possibly.
Ask Brandon about that. We did that from my house to his house with a little satellite dish before sunset came through. I had it and he couldn't get it. We banded about a half a mile. He constrained it was as good as it was in my house. So that may be, if they let us do that, we could use ours and wouldn't cost us anything. I ask him, Bill, donate the dishes because we still got them.
Is there a motion for us to proceed with that then?
I make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We, I've got at least four reports from individuals who want to donate property that they own in the county back to the county. Most cases, it's either small remnants or small, very small parcels that there's multiple heirs in and nobody's interested in the property, family, none of them live here. Usually falls to one to pay the taxes, even if it's only a small amount, they just get tired of it. But over time, I've had, I know I've got one request on my desk, the one or two, the treasurer's office was contacted. We've had at least two in our office, maybe a third, but we had one just actually yesterday. And of course, anyone can make a deed to donate something to someone, but in this case, the county, the board has a vote to accept the deed or you to have it. So I just want to get your guidance on how you want to proceed on that, whether you want to just make it, if they call and want to donate, as long as they take care of getting the deed prepared and, and providing it, making sure all the signatures are there and everything of that nature, we go ahead and look forward with it and present it to you, or if you want it to be presented to you on a case by case basis.
I'd say case by case basis because they need to eat your brownfield. You don't know what you get. Like, cost you to get rid of it.
True. Is that consensus of the board?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll bring the ones that we do have next month, or at least that we have information on. Some of them, we had the information, the one that called today, I'm not sure if she gave her any map numbers or anything on the property or not, but we have contact names so we can get in touch with them.
Also, if you'll refer back to the handout I gave you for the first public hearing on zoning. Over on the bottom of the second page and top of the third page of the planning commission minutes, they are sending forward two items, two zoning text amendments. The first that they're recommending approval on is to amend. There, there's an existing text amendment done several years ago that allows the manufacture of mini storage buildings by special use permit in an A1 zone. In a lot of applications, when the original zoning was done, something like that would have probably included several examples of items that could be built. But the tendency has been over the last, for many years, to do them specific to one application. And what we're having then is if someone, in this case, someone wanted to build mini storage buildings, pretty much the same process, you're building cabinets, playsets, outdoor furniture, similar, similar things of that nature constructed with wood. But each and every one of those, it had to be brought in and go through a zoning text amendment to allow it my special use permit and then go through the special use permit public hearing. It's a lengthy process. So this, this text amendment would add to that existing zoning allowed use by special use permit. It would allow for the manufacture of mini storage buildings, cabinets, playsets, outdoor furniture, and similar uses, which the similar uses determination is made by the zoning ministry, whether it is a similar use in that category or not. That's the first one that's being proposed. The second one that's being proposed is to recommend to expand miniature golf courses as an allowed use by special use permit in the village commercial B1 business and B2 business districts. So bringing those to you to determine if you want to go ahead and move those to a public hearing.
Yeah, six minute.
If I could get a motion to do so.
I'll make that motion. Got a motion, got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I believe that's all I have. Oh, no, that's not all I have. Covered up in a blue shirt. I have a separate agent. Actually, yeah, but I did.
On Thursday of last week, I received a letter of resignation from Charles Slint Jr. I read the letter, please accept this letter as my formal resignation as a member of the Lee County Board of Supervisors from District Four, effective immediately. This announcement comes with a heavy heart. I have loved being a part of this board, serving my neighbors and dedicating myself to representing the best interests of Lee County. However, the times come for me to shift my focus on my family, farm, business, and other personal interests. Jean and I have been so blessed to call Lee County our home. We have raised our kids here, fostered children here, invested in a family farm here, built a small business here, and brought our hearts into this place for over 40 years. And over those 40 years, serving the citizens of the fourth district of Lee County has been one of my greatest honors. I'm so proud of the work we have accomplished together in the past 11 years. It's been an honor to serve as chairman of the board, the Linnisville Planning District Commission, the Lee County Tourism Committee, the Appalachian Community Action and Development Agency Board, Small Business Innovators serving the area, the organization to maintain the Stickerville School, Community Center, and countless other groups. Looking back, I'm honored to have been a part of so many positive steps for Lee County and for Southwest Virginia, such as bringing many new 21st century manufacturing jobs to my district with the opening of England Furniture and ensuring access to healthcare with the reopening of the Lee County Community Hospital. Together, we have expanded access to broadband, increased cellular telephone connectivity, developed the Lee County Works Community Service Program, provided essential equipment and support for our law enforcement officers, expanded our emergency communication system, improved infrastructure, invested in our children's education, assisted the PSA with funding shortfalls, promoted Lee County's position as a tourism destination, and improved our position as a regional transportation leader through investments in the Lee County Airport. To the people of my district, I want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve you for over 11 years. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to be part of such a strong and dedicated board. I also want to give thanks to my colleagues for allowing me to work alongside you as we have made life better for the citizens of Lee County. In 1927, at the height of his popularity and at the pinnacle of political power, amidst great political pressure to seek another term, President Calvin Kovacs declined to run for reelection as president. Kovac's example is to be admired and indulated. I recognize that we have accomplished so much together during my time on the board, but I also recognize that it is time for me to step aside and make room for new leadership. I look forward to hearing of the continued success. Keep up the great work. Sincerely, Charles H. Slint Jr.
I make a motion, we pass Resolution of appreciation for Charles H. Slint Jr. The resolution being 22.
Dash zero two two.
Dash zero two two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I also move to introduce his letter of resignation into the minutes.
You said make a motion?
To introduce his letter.
Second. Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, that is all I have.
Next we got reports and recommendations to the board.
I have one. Dan has the paperwork. I'm sitting on the board. The bridge name changed.
I, I did bring that with me, but I've got some information on my desk.
Okay.
I don't have a resolution yet because it's just in the red folder.
Okay. Anyway, it's a bridge down Marcus Creek. Ronnie would like to have it named in, I believe he said it was his own?
Yes.
His own brother, his dad's brother, the uncle brother had. And he served in the Army and done different things, he said. But he said he had to sit the resume show with you. And I'd like it to board, you know, to approve and move forward with that.
I can prepare a resolution for next month. It'll be the bridge over Hardee's Creek. I believe he said the gentleman was, actually grew up about a mile and a half from that point. He, he not buried here in Lee County. His remains of several of them that he was with were never recovered, but he has a burial plot. I forget what country he said it was in, and I'm sure it's in that information that he sent me, but I got that late yesterday, I can't remember. I'll prepare a resolution for next month to submit to you.
Make that motion, move forward.
To have Dan draft a resolution.
Right.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's all I have.
Dean, I'm not asking for another date on the opioid settlement, but would Richard or you or somebody, somebody supposed to let us know when they finalize the regulations?
You asked. I told you I would give you, keep you updated.
Okay.
I have a package for both you and Mr. Poe.
Over tonight. Thank you.
And I would suggest that we probably try to meet to discuss some of that in the next few days because I'm, you'll find some of the information in here is coming from the State Association of Community Service Boards. I got an email yesterday or today from DD1 Diurnal Health. It was sent to county administrators in the service region of Lee White Scott Norton. I want you to meet with us. I didn't know if you all want me to go ahead and, they don't have a date set for that. She was just trying to set some preliminary, get some preliminary ideas moving. So I can either respond back or tell her we have a committee that's going to be working on that. And she does want to meet one-on-one with the counties in the future as well. But, yeah, I've got some information I can give you on that.
Thanks. We talked a while back, I think it was in the summertime, about cutting the trees down the braided pears across the front of Plainback Dogwoods. And I think Mr. Poe recommended that we wait till the leaves get off the trees. I'd make a motion to that end that we get them cut by the end of February. I second that. Any opposed? Someone from one of the rescue squads brought it to me in funding and requested that we reconsider the fact that some rescue squads are running much more than others and that we're funding them all equally, and they don't feel like that's fair. And they feel like some of them are doing less now than they were before they brought it up the first time. I think we need to find a more equitable, equitable way to split up the money. And, you know, we don't need to do the math on it every day, but, you know, once a quarter, once a, I think it should probably quarterly, we give them their money. But we figure up how much we're giving in total. What are we doing now, Dean? Is it 10 or 15? 15. We up the fire and rescue 15? So 15 times how many of them there is divided by four quarters. My recommendation would be to take those numbers that we get quarterly on the calls and to divide it up per what they got. Or something more equitable, you should get the same amount of money if you're not running calls. If you're going five, six, seven days and not running the call at all, there's no reason you should get the same amount as somebody that's running 10 or 12 a day. I agree with that. Y'all have a suggestion on how we can go about it? Just have them report to them's office and he will present it to us.
Well, we get that for, we get that for 911, how many calls are run. But the only problem is that you run into it is, is their insurance fund, you know, to keep operating that because most of them use that for to pay their insurance.
I'd be fine if we even took half of the money that, you know, said 15,000, we said 7,500 of it, we're going to apportion based on your calls. You know what I'm saying?
I, I was going to say, I think rather than just say, well, have a report to number calls, but say, unless you get, well, somebody didn't run any in three months, they wouldn't get any, anything. I think you'd have to have a base amount that you're going to. I think you have to have a base amount that you're going to provide to everybody, and then if you want to split the balance, whatever percentage you want to work up with, I think that would be equitable, but to provide no funding at all, if they run into a situation where they have a vehicle down, or they have loose squad members or something, you're basically putting them out as an agency, because they can't maintain insurance if they have no funding at all.
What would y'all think about taking half of the money and dividing it up based on the calls? I have no idea what their insurance costs a year.
I think we need to talk about some of this in closed session, because it goes deeper than that.
Greg Edwards had the idea, called me the other day about, I think it was Scott County that he was saying had, you know, we adopted Title forty-six point two and Title eighteen point two a while back, in hopes of having officers write some things on county code instead of state code, which they are doing some. And are we keeping track of that at all now, Dane? How much has come to the county from?
I could get that in any time.
But Scott County, I think I mentioned before, is about a half a million dollars a year is coming from fines, from things that are written on local code. So Greg has the idea that we should amend our code to say that there, that jail is not an option if it's written on the county warrant. If an officer writes something on the county warrant and it come with attorney wants jail, then they would amend the charge to a state charge, but if there's no jail available, then you don't get a court-appointed attorney, which means the county doesn't have to pay for it. So if they look at the charge and they think this justifies jail time, then they just move to amend it, the judge appoints somebody's attorney on the state's dime, then they go forward with it. But I think Greg's thinking, and I agree with him, is that you'll get a lot more things charged on a county warrant instead of a state warrant, if you put it that way, and everybody knows on the front end that the county won't have to pay for the attorney bill, less Commonwealth attorney, less, well, either way, the county wouldn't have to pay any attorney bills. So what were y'all's thoughts on that, or that may be as clear as mud, but...
That would be good to me.
I would. Dane, I'm thinking right there, we'd have to have a...
We'd have a public hearing to hear the orders, and I just want to comment, I can assure you, we are not collecting anything like what Scott County is, because they do speeding tickets on twenty-three.
That's where they're getting all their money.
Yeah.
I wouldn't say all of it.
Well, not all of it, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, get bullshit.
A big portion of it.
Is that clear enough for you to be able to draft a...
Yeah, I think we can work with that.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Where are we on the, we brought up a few times the building in town with the issues with the building code. Where are we on that now?
I need the issue of the building code.
The case with the building down close to George's office?
I have sent them another notice, I still haven't heard anything back. I think the next step was to get an officer to actually charge. Of course, we can't serve it, all it can do is mail it, but that's kind of where we're at, they still haven't responded to.
I'll make a motion, we have the county attorney try to get an officer to charge on that, and that would be the building next to your office. Can't think of the owner's name.
I can't right now.
Mike... It's in corporate, corporation name, is it not?
No, all of the correspondence has been directed to me, there's not been a corporation named at all in any of the building spectrum.
I'll make a motion, we table that, I guess I need to make a motion, but we can come back to it, and we'll figure out what the name is. Lastly, on what landfill issue in Bristol, we've kind of kicked this ground a few, a few times, I'd kind of like to bring that to a head about whether or not we're going to do something, moving forward with them, if we're just going to let it go. I don't think we should let it go.
I think we moved forward last, last year.
I thought we did.
What did we do? I don't remember if it's not the minutes that we took any...
We didn't pay them, we paid them.
When was held?
For the August, ten hundred and fifty?
That was for the nine thousand dollars, what about the other one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars you cost?
That's, that's the action was taken last, that's all I could pull out.
We were going to proceed with that, I think this one, I think that was discussion we had.
So do we need to have any discussion?
I have to work.
Well, the opinion, I'm making the form of a motion that we should have our county attorney send a letter to their county attorney, ask them what they plan to do to renew the bridge contract, and what they're willing to give us for shortness.
Yeah, I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's all I have.
You got any further? Dane, what have you found out about the property over in Jasper?
I tried to get in touch with the surveyor this morning, we'll see if he had a copy of it, and he was out of the office, and she said he should be back in by three-thirty or four, and was going to give him a message, but he never did contact me back. That's all I'm waiting on. I checked with him the other day, and he said he should have it pretty soon, but I'm waiting on that.
Have you got any feedback from Gary about closing those too?
The tonnage of Jasper has decreased dramatically on those, about being closed on Sunday, and we've seen a decrease in, 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 well, but more dramatic at Jasper even than it did in Stacey.
That's good, we're not paying off somebody else's trash. I know when I went by there, it was Sunday night, it was right before dark, I think, it was trash outside the gate.
I think the first, the first weekend that it was closed over there, there's like seven or eight bags, that was it. He has commented since then on what it has, but he has said that the tonnage was down dramatically.
We have a problem at the, over here at the transfer station with those dunks, and I made the break of that last week, because I was nowhere on Sunday before, we met on Tuesday, and there was this guy over there, and he had in a stick made, looked like a broom handle, and had hooks on the end of it, and was pulling trash out of the dumpsters and going through the bags. And of course, I told him, I said, I pulled up, told him, I said, what you're doing is illegal, if you don't get in that vehicle and leave right now, I'm calling the sheriff. And he bummed something, and he got the vehicle and they left. He wasn't driving, I roped the tag under down to get out. But that, on Sundays over there, it's the blue light special. They don't do it too bad on Saturdays, but Sundays is when they go. I think, you know, we need to put some cameras up over there, because I, you know, I see that happening more over there than I do at any other transfer station we have.
I agree. Where are we on the Flatwoods cameras? Are those working, or are they close to?
Hey, Gary's going to try to get them installed within the next few days.
I think when we know if they liked those cameras, and if the system works like it's supposed to, I think we ought to...
We're going to need to see the clarity of how good a picture we can get on them, but he's hoping to get those in within the next week.
Can you put that on our business stakeup next month, about, and find out from them if they even have liked those cameras, so we can... And while we're at it, same thing, you're going to have the internet issue, but the bus shop is a hundred and twenty yards away. Be good if they can spot us some internet.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I just have, just to follow up on Charles, I'd just like to publicly thank Mr. Charles Slint for his service to the county. That's all I have.
I'm making a motion to go into closed session, we sent to two point two days, thirty-seven eleven, sub A-one personnel, five prospective business, seven consultation with counsel, and twenty-nine contracts.
You got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?